Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District. The date is still December 8th, 2011, and the time is 6:40. And we are reconvening into open session, and the first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Vedica, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we go to the Oath of Office.
You've actually already given the Oath of Office.
Why don't we introduce the new board members? How about that? We've already gotten the Oath of Office, which was done a couple of days ago.
Somebody wanted a photo op of that.
Okay, well, re-elected and taking the Oath of Office is Larry Vandenvoss. So, as you can see, he's not here, but here is his chair.
He did play, and he did, you know, say that he would be transparent this term.
Absolutely transparent, okay.
Transparency, right there.
And in addition, we'd like to introduce you to Erin Lamont, who is our newest Board of Education. So, I guess we'll just dispense with the ceremonial Oath of Office, because we've already done the real Oath of Office. Okay, and today at 5 o'clock, we did a reorganization of the board, and I'm sitting here because I'm the new president. Larry Vandenvoss, who will be sitting here, will be in charge of vice, he will be the vice president, and Toni Coladas is the new clerk. And with that, I guess I'll ask, let's see, we have nothing to report coming out of closed session, so the next item of business is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then, next, the next item is the approval of the minutes, and can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting of November 10th, 2011?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any abstention?
I need to abstain.
Thank you. And then, the next minutes are the minutes of the special meeting of November 15th, 2011. If I could please have a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have an abstention?
I have an abstention.
Thank you, okay. Now we move to the report of the superintendent.
So, actually, I, we've rearranged some of this, because for about two or three hours this afternoon, we were worried if we were going to have power or not, so we were bringing generators in to get to the bare bones. But I want to use part of the meeting to thank some people, and that's appropriate, kind of as we're changing terms and starting with the new board. And I would like to start with the Major M campaign team, and I think unfortunately, because the power situation, whether or not we were going to have a meeting or a full meeting, and the TVs were going to be rolling or not, we don't have the whole group here. And we can always bring them back again. But we started this grand adventure, I think, about five months ago. In some ways, it just seems like it's been going on. I've been superintendent almost six years, and this is like the third campaign, so it seems like it's been going on for almost six years. But we started this grand adventure for Major M about five months ago, because we looked at the budget situation, we looked at what was going on in Sacramento, we realized Sacramento, unfortunately, was never going to get their act straight, and it still doesn't look like, when we see the governor's proposed budget in January, that they will have their act straight. And so, it was about, again, going out to the community at the local level and saying, "If you want the kind of quality programs that we have in Palos Verdes, we need your help." And once again, the community stepped up and said, "We will support you." It was close, but they did it. And that doesn't happen by accident. First of all, it started with the board saying, "We need to do this." And they took that action back in July and said, "We need to go out and we need to ask the community once again." So, we got to start with the board, the fact that they put this on the ballot and asked the community to come forward and say whether or not they're going to support the schools once again. But then, when that happens, you have to say, "Man, we need a lot of people to make this work, and you need a campaign organization and a campaign team." So, we did. It was amazing. Just, once again, just the group that stood up, volunteered, said, "We will carry this through, we will make this work." They probably didn't sleep much, they probably stopped seeing their families for about four or five months, but they put a lot of hours and a lot of time into it, and it paid off. So, I'd like to start, and maybe we bring Julie and Kim to the podium, at least so the TV cameras can pick up on them. Successful campaigns have to start with leaders, and they took this on. They were brand-new at it, but they took it on, and they did very well, because I got marching orders almost every day about, no, I exactly was, they played. No, they organized, they organized the campaign with a lot of other dedicated group of people. But, just starting with Julie and Kim, I don't know, hundreds and hundreds of hours that they donated to this cause to make this work. So, to the two of you, amazing, what a great job for a campaign to make this all work. So, thank you, thank you, for all the work that you did.
I just want to say a quick, you know, this starts with a long line of yeses. I mean, we were the first to say yes, but really, this community has stood up, the parents, thank you to everyone who really, if anyone asks how you're successful at doing this, and now we're getting information from other cities who want to, you know, do this as well, you need the volunteers. That was the number-one difference, is our community has the volunteer force, so everyone should be proud of themselves, and may this happen. Every single person made a huge difference.
And Julie likes to speak in public. She keeps, actually, don't, don't, don't leave. If you would bring all the volunteers that are in the room that contributed to the camp, come to the podium, so we can recognize you and have you introduced. Don't be shy.
Todd, come on up.
Nick, I see all of you. Tina's back there, all of you that... Not that any of you are strangers to us, but just so the TV audience know who you are, if you would just introduce yourselves. Don't be shy.
Julie Trall.
Priscilla Adler.
Kim Rutledge.
Todd Murzke.
Tina Quinn.
Dick Yakabouch.
And again, I saw, I, what do you think, Malcolm, about every week, several hours a week, these were the people that were helping to organize this, make this work. So, again, for all of you, thank you. Wouldn't have happened without the volunteer base. And one other, and there's some other people, don't, I'm just going to make you stand there for a few minutes, just to get all the glory. But also, I only see one principal in the audience, so I'm going to have Frank Calafano represent all the principals in the school. See what happens when you show up, Frank. The principals were amazing, because they just know a lot of people. And, and, if, it's one of the best groups I, we know that we work with, that if you need to encourage them to get people to get out to vote, the principals are great at that. And they were very, very successful, and we saw them volunteer a lot of hours. So, I will pass it on to all the principals I already have for their work. I won't put Frank on the spot with that, but Frank, you can get back to your colleagues. We really appreciate their effort. So, thank you for the principals for their work. Oh, go ahead.
I should say, before you sit down, I just want to say thank you, because what you've done for this community is a tremendous gift for the school district, and it's a tremendous gift for the kids, and a tremendous gift for the teachers, and the classified employees, because you have now provided a miracle for us, a, a constant stream of local income coming into the school district that Sacramento cannot get a hold of. And it's going to provide stability for this district forever, and it's just a tremendous, tremendous gift for this school district, and all of you are to be commended for the great jobs you've done. And so, thank you very, very much for all your efforts.
Our pleasure.
Before they sit down, do you have some more? Oh, actually, I just, even though, even though they're not here, not all of them, and again, I really do apologize for having to deal with power outages and everything, but the PTA presidents, the ledge reps, all the work they did, the fact that the Peninsula Education Foundation stood up and said, "We're going to help you." Teachers that volunteered during part of the process, in terms of getting people out to vote, there was just, it was, it was just a large group of volunteers that made, pulled this off to make it work, and it, and it was successful, getting the message out to the community about what we needed. So, so, and I probably forgot people, and you can help me, is, that's my fear of putting a list together sometimes, but it was, we were dealing with, I think, hundreds of volunteers to make this all work.
Yeah, those, I want to also thank the Continental Development for giving us a home for those three months. I guess we had it September, October, November. We were actually out of there the day after the election, and turning in keys and what have you, so that was, that property that we were able to use was great. And just, golly, the, the energy, I think the, the iconic day was Election Day, and the electricity that was going, funny you should say, the different type of electricity that was going through getting out the vote, and people checking on polling places, and all, all, all the stuff that went, that went on with that, it was, it was something I'll never forget. It was, it was so different from past campaigns, because of just the time of the year, for example, everything else that was going on, so. We will be having a wrap-up real soon of, of this whole process, and anything that I can glean from that, I'll certainly bring back and share with the board.
Did we include the PTA in this?
We did.
Yes.
Yeah, Ann Levin, and it was great, and...
I want to, I want to thank all the committee members, and especially Julie and Kim, for really stepping up. It was, I mean, truly a leap of faith that it would happen, and you guys made that happen. And then, in one of my board member comments, I said this, but it's oftentimes late in the night, and I'm sure everybody was watching, so I'll repeat it. On behalf of the board, I really want to thank Malcolm for kind of his board representation and his leadership for really taking the yeoman's work on this, too.
Just last thing I would say is that, you know, legacy. I mean, again, when you look back in, in years from now, you'll be able to say, "I was part of that." And so, I just, again, thank you. It's, having done that for many, many campaigns before, I know the hard work that you guys have all done, and it's, it is appreciated. Thank you.
Okay.
And I wanted to make other one recognition for the, for the group left, who, I don't know why she's bailing on me, but Pearl Azook has decided to retire. And, and we've been together since 2004, and probably for somebody in the business of running the business department of a school district, she probably couldn't pick the worst time to be a chief business officer, in terms of all of the state budget reductions and all of the stuff going on in Sacramento. And I want to thank her, not only just for the hard work, but just being able to guide us through some very, very difficult times with this. And we'll see the report when we're dealing with the first interim later on in the agenda, but this hasn't been easy. It's been team approach, working with the board, working with district staff, but somebody has to be in charge of that department, somebody has to be the one tracking this. She's been through partial tax elections, bond elections, I started trying to think construction, capital campaigns, all the trees are one of her favorite topics. If you want to call her and talk about trees, give Pearl a call. So, it just, it's just like so many things that have been on the plate over this time since 2004. So, Pearl, thank you, we're going to miss you, and it's just, it's been a great team, a good run for the last seven years, so thank you. As we always say, we never let anybody retire without giving them the bird, so this is, and these are for you, too, so, but thank you.
I'll say a few words. Well, I just want to thank you again for being part of this great school district, and it's been my honor to end here my 30-year career in school business, and what a great place to end the career is, is with PV Schools. And I want to give my sincere appreciation to the board for hiring me and letting me be part of the PV family. I've really enjoyed working with so many people here, who have been so kind and caring, who really care about our students, and I think as a team, we really did accomplish a lot. And it's been such a pleasure to work with the different school sites, with the PTA, with the Booster Clubs, and the campaign, and the Ed Foundation as well. And I also want to really thank the business office. You know, they're behind the scenes, we take care of payroll and plumbing, and we take care of our technology and our printing, and we worry about energy and, and budget accounting, and, you know, we've continued to try to do our work, even through these most difficult times. And I've really enjoyed working with my colleagues in the cabinet, and a special thank you to Walker, who's been a really, really special boss for me during this really difficult time. And lastly, I wanted to thank my family. I have two daughters, Lisa and Kristen, and my husband Mel, who's been there through my entire career, and it's because of their support that I've been able to continue on in this profession for all of these years. So, for the next phase of my life, everyone's asking, "What am I going to do next?" I've already enrolled in two adult school classes, flower arranging and digital photography, and I do plan to do service work, and I do plan to travel, and I do still plan to be really actively involved with CASBA, which is the California Association for School Business Officials, and maybe I'll even take up golf again. And I've already ran out of time for the day, right? So, again, thank you, again, for this opportunity to be with PV Schools. And we haven't had the audit yet, so maybe...
Say something real quick? Yeah, Pearl, I just want to thank you for all your help, and it's not necessarily your business expertise that I know will miss. I'm really going to miss you. You have a very bright spirit, and it's always been nice to come into the office and come here, and you've always kind of made this not only a helpful, but a, but a pleasant experience as a colleague and a friend, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on now to, oh, are we going to do RTI?
No, we're going to bring that back, because I had it canceled, not knowing if we were running with power or not tonight, so...
Okay, but we do have student board members here tonight, so why don't we start with Sarah? Do you have a report for us?
I do. So, it's been a while since I gave my last report, so there, there's a lot to catch up on, but here we go. First off, we're very proud of our sports teams from these past couple weeks, they've, they've performed excellently. Both boys' and girls' cross-country teams won CIF and State. We're the only, we're only the sixth team in state history to ever win both girls' and boys' championships in the same year. At the national meet in Portland, Oregon, Jonah Diaz won sixth-best male runner in the country, and Rebecca Mira won 16th-best runner in the country. So, we're really proud of our athletes. Another athletic event that was going on was our football team did a great job this season, this season winning the Bay League. We were eight and two overall during the regular season, and undefeated in Bay League games. Unfortunately, we lost a very close game in the first round of CIF playoffs to a very good Hart team. Although they went through a heartbreaking loss, the school came together in support of our teams. So, that was really encouraging, that we could all pick up and move on and support our football team. On November 16th, at school, there was an assembly in the gym, in which students were presented with powerful information about distracted driving. Martha Testmer spoke about, spoke about how her son Donovan died in a car crash due to distracted driving. Her story made a huge impact on PV High students, and we're all making conscious efforts to be safer drivers. There was also a well-attended parent meeting that night, where Martha told her story and made an impact on parents as well, so that they could communicate with their students. And I, I have a lot of friends who have really changed their habits in driving because of this assembly. Also, just yesterday, there was an assembly in the gym called Teen Truth Live, which exposed the risks and horrors of drugs and alcohol, so this is just another reminder of safe, healthy living. Senior seeking, Nick Spelta, won Defense Attorney of the Year for this year's mock trial team for the County of Los Angeles. And so, I've worked with Nick, we are both on the mock trial team together, he did an excellent job, and the County Board of Supervisors will formally recognize this huge honor. And all students have been congratulating Nick, it's been a great time for him, and it's a great time for PV High, we're really proud of our mock trial team, especially our Defense Attorney of the Year. Lend Me a Tenor was our school's drama production just two weeks ago, and it got rave reviews. I saw it myself, I thought it was great. With a relatively small cast, the actors had a really lively performance, so it kind of got the drama department going, and a lot of good PR for our school. There's a jazz concert on Friday, December 2nd. There are more people in the NPR than they've ever had before, so it's their biggest turnout ever, and they received many emails and words of praise of how people look forward to, to next years. And I talked to their director, and there was a lot of positive feedback about that as well. And tonight, actually, is our orchestra concert, so as we speak, they're in the, I think they're in the NPR performing, so it's also a very musical, musical week. For the 12 Days in December, in which students attend school, ASB is sponsoring an event called 12 Days of Change. This is kind of an extension of Challenge Day, in which students pledge to positively impact the campus in some way, and their little pledge cards, I made one myself, are posted on school. So, everyone is trying to, especially in the holiday spirit, pick up and make PV High a better place to learn and grow. ASB is also sponsoring a project in which they collect black socks for Los Angeles homeless, so a lot of students are bringing socks to school and coming together and putting them in the bins outside of ASB. And then, finally, hot topics around campus. Students, unfortunately, are still upset about the grade change policy, especially now that first-quarter grades are about to come in. The students that have different learning styles, in which they do better on standardized desks, are, feel like they're being penalized, and the outcry from students is getting more powerful as time passes. You know, this is something that people, their frustration continues to grow, and it's really sad for students who have put the time in, but, you know, aren't going to get rewarded like we have been in the past. Other hot topics is, of course, the 12 Days of Change, because people are really trying to make a conscious effort to improve our campus and ways of, of daily life and daily classes. And then, finally, seniors are finishing college applications, some, some acceptances are coming in already, so it's a very exciting time, but again, people are really disappointed on the result of the grade change policy, because they feel that these same college acceptances will not be the same next year due to the change in policy. So, it's an exciting time now, and we hope that it continues to be an exciting time in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Vedica?
I, I came to the last meeting, I believe, so we don't have that much new going on, not as much as Sarah, but we, too, have been having a very musical couple of weeks. Choir has been putting on a lot of shows, and they also, and this was new this year, they made a CD, and they've been selling their CD to raise funds for trips and other expenditures. And another interesting thing was that they had our orchestra accompany them on the CD, which they haven't had before. And actually, orchestra has their concert on Tuesday, and choir is going to be doing, featuring in that concert, too, for their winter concert. So, we're having collaborations across musical departments. Also, Jazz Band will be performing next week, and they are really good, they sound like professionals, so we suggest that everyone see that. Also, in the arts, Drama is, the play is playing right now, You Can't Take It With You, and this is also a really special play, because this is the first time that we are featuring teachers in the play. So, every night, that, one of the teachers is playing a minor role in the play, and I think, like, for example, Mrs. Cress was in it opening night, and every night, there's a teacher. I'm planning on seeing it this weekend, I think I'm going to see my English teacher in it. And it's just, it's just more of this cross-curricular activities going on, and it's just been a really fun time for campus, as we celebrate the holiday season and all of our arts performances. And also, we will be having our annual boutique in our gym, and we will have really some of the best vendors around in order to sell things and raise money for Peninsula, and really hoping that we will get a lot of people to come out to it, because it's a really great way to raise funds, and the vendors are very, very good. And speaking of holiday spirit, we had Willenberg School come today to our school. It was, it was really exciting, and actually, they didn't, we thought we weren't going to be able to have them come this year, because they couldn't afford to pay for the buses and the transportation fees, but ASB was able to subsidize the cost, so we, we got our Willenberg performers to come to Peninsula, and we had an extended lunch, and they performed in the gym. And it was really festive and heartwarming, obviously, and it just has been encouraging a lot of holiday spirit in everyone. And we are actually going there next week for a lot of Peninsula people to perform there, so we're looking forward to that as well. In ASB, we also had a canned food drive, and that was very successful, classes competed to get a Jamba Juice party, and we ended up with a lot of cans, and some classes even brought in 400 to 500 cans, just one class of 30 kids, so we were very impressed with the generosity. And lastly, on Wednesday, yes, yesterday, we had our shadow day for private school students. We, we usually end up stealing away a lot of the private school students, and they end up coming to Peninsula, so, so we have an, a sort of shadow day, so they can get the feel of a public school and realize that it's way more awesome. So, that was, we had that at Penn.
Did you have a shadow?
Uh, no, I didn't. I think they do it through ASB, I'm not sure, but I'm not in ASB, so I didn't get a shadow. I would have liked one, though. So, hopefully, we'll be seeing some new Panthers on campus next year from private schools. That's it.
And Vedica, do you have any special college news you'd like to share with us?
I got in early to Columbia today.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Getting used to the weather tonight.
That's fabulous. Now, was that the only school you applied to?
Well, I sent in, like, five more applications, but I have to withdraw them now, because it's decision.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Okay, now we move to public communications, and I do have three cards here, and they all have to do with the grading policy. And I thought I would just share, that the superintendent shared with me, that we are going to be having a special board meeting sometime in January to discuss specifically that topic. So, you're all welcome, going to call your names, you're still welcome to come up here and use your three minutes, but there's not going to be any action taken by the board at this meeting, it's not agenda's, but we will be having a full discussion on the topic in January at some point, and you'll let us know, Walker. Okay, so the first card is from Terrence Cormier, is that correct?
My name is Terrence Cormier, I am a teacher at PV High School, been there for five years, and the reason why I'm here today is because of the grade-changing policy that was put in place by the board over the summer, and as Sarah so eloquently said, this has been somewhat problematic, because this is not a, you know, some people say this is, this is, this issue here, or this issue there, this is a student issue, more than anything else. Our students are excited, they should be celebrating, in my opinion, something that is great, but instead, we are in a culture and environment of negativity over something that was done, in my opinion, pretty hastily, over the summer. And our students work very hard, our teachers work very hard, we take pride in what we do, I enjoy my job, but I think the teacher, excuse me, the students deserve much better than this. We, this is something that we should be working together at as a community, we, we love the students, and this is going on across the state. This is not a PV district thing, but if you look at the districts just across the, across California, they're doing the same thing, and there's nothing inherently unethical about the practice. If Peninsula High School wants to do it, great. If, if PV wants to do it, then we should have the freedom to do that. So, I just want to make it absolutely clear that this is not a us versus Peninsula, or us versus they, this is a student issue. And I think teachers should have a right to grade in a way that is ethically important, but also in a way that's going to motivate the students to... that's going to motivate the students to, to be successful. Thank you very much.
My next card is from Cynthia Mitchell. And then Nick Spelta is next after her.
And Nick had to go.
Oh, okay.
Stepped out. Yeah. Hi, my name is Cynthia Mitchell. I've been here before. And I agree with Terrence and I agree with Sarah. I think the hastiness in which the decision was made, and I respect a lot of you, it was just, I don't know what the dynamics were behind it. And I'm hoping that we are going to be able to rectify that. I think that particular incentive allows a lot of students or gives them the incentive to not underachieve. You know, our A students should all score advanced. When I see an A student score proficient, I, I realize they had, they blew it off. They had to have, because this year, that didn't happen. Or a C student, you know, scoring far below basic, they should be scoring basic. And the proficient should do this and this. So I think what really happened, the majority of the students scored where they were supposed to be. And I think both schools can benefit, but I don't think any teacher should be tied to do it or not to do it. I'm also here for Teshia Barton, who had a cold today. And she hadn't wanted me to read a letter, so that pulled me out today because I've already, and I'm sorry that I, I got so emotional last time I was up here, but it's just the way that it happened was just mind-boggling. Anyway, this is from Teshia. So Board of Education, unfortunately due to a cold, I'm not able to address the tapes documenting the meeting where the grading policy was explored by all members, the only meeting with all members. So she had been listening to these tapes. Yet the exploration surprisingly laid the groundwork for a grading policy that came about without doing what the members agreed to do during that May meeting. I do want to acknowledge the logic of three board members. Larry Vanderboss, Tony Kalodas, and Malcolm Sharp followed throughout the one and a half hour discussion. They agreed to these three things. To wait to implement a grading policy until all data was gathered. They wanted to evaluate current student incentives and their effect on performance. They also were aware that grading issues should belong to the teachers. In fact, Larry Vanderboss reiterated teacher autonomy repeatedly throughout this meeting. He seems to get it. Yet weeks later, a policy is put into place without any aggregate data. How did this happen? Maybe because Larry or Tony were not present for the vote. No blame is put on them, but blame is placed on those board members who should have followed through with what was agreed at that May meeting. If you listen to the tapes, you would to agree that some things were not followed. They should have waited for all the information and gathered to assess the situation. So I think we're in more, the uproars more on how it was done. We're not, you do not normally act this way. And I don't know what the panic was or what the hurry or what the knee-jerk situation was. I do agree in trying to tie, you know, people's hands on extra credit. I, I get that whole idea we shouldn't be trying to get students to do things because they get extra credit. I, I'm doing that now. I say, hey, you want to bring black socks in? That's a beautiful thing, but you're not getting three points in my math class. You know, I, I think things like that. And I've heard people argue they should be doing good on that test for the good of the school and the world and the planet. But they are teenagers. So I'm just hoping that you guys revisit that. And I'm glad to hear that you are. And I'm glad to hear me out. Thank you.
Kathy, why don't you just go straight to the podium? I mean, my God.
It's only because something came up that Walker said that I just want to, the board meeting that we're going to come to in January, I would just like to make sure that it's not going to be, I know you said a special meeting, and I know a lot of times the special meetings are at 8:30 in the morning.
No.
This will be an evening.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. I wanted to make sure that it's evening when the teachers can come and we can get all the stakeholders in here to talk and...
And you know what? We're going to discuss all the issues that have been brought up today. We haven't been able, you know, because it's not agendaized.
Right.
We can't respond
Oh, yes.
To people who, who talk to us like this. So we're going to talk about all of it at the board meeting.
Okay. And we'll, and we'll have plenty in advance so that we can let everybody know and get...
It'll come from Walker. I mean, I, I don't know when the date is. I don't know what we're talking about. It's just, it is going to happen.
I just want to make sure that it's in the evening.
We'll make sure everybody knows. We'll put a plan ahead, work with the board, making sure all five of them can be present.
Great.
Okay.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And that is it for public comments. So now we're going to move to budget. And I believe that's Pearl.
Right. So first up is our audit report. As required by law, we are to have an independent auditor review our books. And that would be for the 10-11 fiscal year. And new to this engagement is Vavernik, Trynanday. There are new auditors, so this will be the first time they're presenting in, for this report. And we have our partner, Royce Townsend here.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Pleasure to be here. Does it work? Do you see this?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't know if it works yet for us.
Okay, so you just, you just let me know when, oh, oh my gosh.
It's the parting of the sea.
Yes, this is wonderful. You know, I did want to, while I'm waiting for this to show up there, just want to share with you that I had waited a number of years to actually have an opportunity to work with Pearl.
And now she's leaving? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. And I was so excited. And I said, oh, finally, because, you know, Pearl is a name in school business. And so I, we were thrilled to death to have an opportunity this first year. And then she shares that she's retiring. So, but good luck to you, Pearl, in, in your endeavors. Anyhow, I'm here to present the audit report stated, Royce Townsend with Vavernik, Trynanday and Company. And what is being presented? We have a couple different items here for you. One of them is what we call the SAS 114 letter. It's a direct communication charge with those with governance, that's yourself, and it's required communication. And in addition, I am presenting the audited financial statements. We'll have three opinions that we're offering in relation to the financial statements, the federal awards, and the state awards. So, starting with the SAS 114 letter, there's, most of what's within the SAS 114 letter is actually incorporated with the audit report itself. I've got, you know, some examples such as audit findings and significant estimates and on and on and on. But there's two specific items within the SAS 114 letter that really have no place within the audit report. And that's difficulties encountered during the course of the audit and disagreements with management. They really, like I say, they really don't have a place that we can communicate them to you. So, so we're intending to communicate those to you through this letter here. And if I had either of these, they would be incorporated within the SAS 114 letter. But I am happy to let you know that we did not have any difficulties or disagreements with management during the course of the audit. So, in speaking of the audit itself, what are we really attempting to do with the audit? Well, so that you understand this, we are providing reasonable assurance, which means that we're not suggesting it's total assurance because we're not looking at every single transaction. Otherwise, we'd be here forever. So we do offer opinions, as I stated, and the unqualified opinion would be the highest assurance that we may be able to provide. And how are we able to get to the point where we are able to provide an unqualified opinion? Well, we do risk assessment. As your new auditors, we come in and we look at all your processes. We first identify the processes. And then I'm sure your business office can tell you, we spend a lot of time analyzing them and understanding them, understanding and reviewing the internal controls associated with that. And then we start testing transactions. And as a result of all of that work, then we're able to opine on these specific areas. So, for me, I always like to focus a governing board to the summary of auditor's results, which in your report is on page 77. And this is where it summarizes the opinions related to financial statements, federal awards, and state awards. As far as the financial statements themselves, we are providing you an unqualified opinion, which means in essence that there were no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses that we identified during the course of the financial statement audit. Then we move down and then we have the federal awards opinion. Once again, unqualified. This year, probably unlike most years, we had a number of federal programs. We actually tested five, what we call major federal programs because of the amount of our monies that were received by the district this past year. And once again, we've identified no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses. And then lastly, we have the state awards, things such as your attendance programs, your class size reduction. And once again, we had an unqualified opinion. Other things to identify or note during the summary of auditor's results is that we had no audit adjustments. Now, while we didn't have any significant efficiencies or material weaknesses, we do have what we call management letter comments. We believe them to be controlled deficiencies, not significant deficiencies, that we'd like to bring to your attention. And those begin on page 85. And those are items that we believe that there's some areas that, that we would like the district to look at and analyze and, and review. And as I said, there's a number of them. Most of them deal with your student bodies. But we did spend a concerted effort this year as your first-year auditors in the Food Service Department. So you'll see a number of them as well there. And before I take questions, I did want to let you know that we also have presented to you the bond audits related to Measure R and Measure S. These are required as, by state constitution, Article 13A. Both of these audits are related to both financial audits and performance audits. The financial audits would be specific to the monies that receive for Measures R and Measures S. And the compliance or performance audit would be specific to compliance of how you spent those monies in accordance with the project listings and the specific measures themselves, the bond language. In both cases, we have unqualified opinions related to the financial audit, and we found no issues of noncompliance in relation to the performance audit. So if you have any questions, I know that was quite a bit of information for you there, but if you have any questions on any of this, I'm, I'm here for you.
Pearl, we've, we've heard concerns about ASB operations in the past. Are there any notes that you're going to be leaving for, you know, the, the next person in your job as to how we may be able to rectify?
Right. Well, one of the things that the board actually took action on last month is that we have a new software called Active Network, I think. Is that the correct title? And that it works in conjunction with the Blue Bear software for ASB. And that's going to do more tracking in terms of receipting. And also, we'll be able to do more centralized and actually look at, from the district's perspective, and have an overview and have access to the information. So that's the first step that we're going to be doing. The next thing is that we're going to continue to do more training. We need to continue to train at all of the different sites. And we, we need to find a way to centralize at some point. And that would be my recommendation that I'll be passing on to Lydia is to take a look at that as well. So.
Erin?
Just a question, Pearl. Is the, the people that are working the ASB funds at the school sites, is there a lot of turnover in those personnel?
Um, not a lot, but we need to continually do more training. I know that that's something that we do need to do. So.
Okay. I mean, because it seems to be that's, and I know we're not unique in that, I presume.
No, you're not unique in having ASB comments.
Right, right. But it does always seem to be the thing that we need to work real hard on. And so I was, you know, if it was a high turnover area, you think, hmm, okay. But, but it just is one of those things that's fraught with problems, I guess.
Well, there's just a lot of accounting and documentation and follow-through that. A lot of times, individuals aren't necessarily trained. And so we need to just continually work on that as well. So.
So are we talking about five individuals? We have five ASB?
No, there are more than that in terms of...
Because at both the high schools, they'd have two people in the office.
Yes.
But, but we're talking five sites. Is there ASB at?
Yes, that's correct.
At?
Well, a little bit at Rancho Del Mar.
Rancho Del Mar?
Yeah. But not, not really, no. It's primarily the, the three intermediates and the, yeah, the secondary schools and the two high schools.
Any other questions? Nothing? Well, thank you very much. That was easy.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you for waiting.
It's not always going to be thank you.
Okay, so we need to accept the report as presented and forward the report. Do we have to take any action, Pearl?
Please, you do need to take the action.
Oh, could I have a motion to accept the report and send it forward?
Are we, are we taking items one and two together, Barbara?
Uh, yes, we would be.
Okay. I move approval of the audit report as presented and including the one for bond Measures R and S.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Next, we move to the first interim report, correct?
We have a presentation, but it's really, if the board's wish, if they would like to see it or just kind of open it. Come on up, Amber. Don't be shy.
I don't know. What do you think?
It's easiest for them to present the information.
Let's go ahead.
All right.
It's not, it's not that long.
We want to distribute that. Oops. Okay. So, again, the first interim report is one of those financial reports that's required. We have the budget. We have the first interim report, the second interim report, and then the unaudited actuals is sort of the cycle. So we are now in the first reporting of the 2011-12 fiscal year. And just again, we've got several balls going on and up in the air. At the same time, we've working on four different budget cycles. So we've just closed out, as the auditor has done, the 10-11 year. We've got the final numbers and the books are closed and they audited them. So we're done with that. We're now working on the 11-12 interim report. And now, next month, we're going to start gearing up for the 12-13 year. And we're going to be starting to look at the multi-year projections based on the governor's budget. That's going to be presented in the middle of the month. And then we're also going to see what the effect is if the trigger is going to get pulled. Because again, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but next week is when the decision will be, whether the trigger will get pulled and it'll be effective in February. So we're looking at that. And then as we're planning for next year, we have to continually look at our enrollment because enrollment does drive our staffing. And that, again, as we all know, that 80, 90% of our budget now is in staffing. So the enrollment numbers is crucial for planning for the next year. And then we do need to look, because of the requirement for the interim report and certification, that not only we look at this year, we have to look two years out to ensure that we are solvent. So we're watching all these different cycles all at one time. Okay, this is the, the timeline of the state trigger. Again, again, at, when the budget was adopted, it was the assumption that we were going to get $4 billion more in revenue. And that had, if we did not, there would be, the trigger would get pulled at different levels. But these were sort of the, the timelines in which was outlined. The State Controller's Office, SCO, would give us the cash reports. And then in November, we had the Legislative Analyst Office give their forecast. And there's, at that time in November, they said that we were short $3.7 billion, which translated into a trigger that would affect us of about 189, 190 per ADA. We are waiting for Finance to release their bulletin. As of today, it has not been released yet, although the State Controller's Office did release a statement today that said that revenue is a little bit higher. So maybe the 3.7 that they haven't met yet maybe actually could be less than that. But until next week, when Finance makes the decision after looking at that, we'll know exactly for sure. Again, February 1 was the trigger date in which was going to be effective, if it was going to affect for those different levels of individuals. And let's go to the next slide. Because it depending on where the shortfall is, is depending on where schools would be affected. So on the bottom is the shortfall by billion. So it's 1 billion, 2 billion, 3 billion, 4 billion short. Okay? So each one of those, if we're 1 billion short, then there's no effect to any budgets. Everything's pushed into the 12-13 year. If you're more than 1 billion to 2 billion, then the UCs are affected. 3 billion to 4 billion, that's when school... Three billion to four billion, that's when schools get affected. So, again, we remember what we said, that the best, it's the best-case scenario of the LAO story, of their findings versus Finance. So, right now, we know that it won't be any worse, a three point seven billion and a one eighty-nine. However, and we'll talk about why we've planned for a two sixty because of the trigger. That was information that we had gotten before. So, on the top there is if we get four billion in less revenue, then you'd see that the cuts would be up to two fifty per ADA. And so, in our case, for PV schools, that equates to about three million dollars per student.
For the district.
For the district, sorry.
So, as we prepared the first interim, Los Angeles County Office of Education is charged with fiscal oversight for all districts in the county. And they provide guidance and assumptions that the districts must make when we prepare our budget as well as our interim reports. So, the informational bulletin, number one oh nine, provided guidance to districts to include a contingency plan in two thousand eleven, twelve, should our revenue be reduced due to the triggers. And so, they also included what that full impact would be. So, if the state was short four billion dollars, what would that mean? And as Pearl just said, that means three point one million dollars to our school district in two thousand eleven, twelve. So, not only did we have to show a contingency plan, but we had to show that we would be able to maintain fiscal solvency. So, we are glad to report that. In our first interim, we do recommend that the board approve a positive certification, and that we will be able to meet our financial obligation at year-end as well as for the two subsequent fiscal years. But I want to talk about the first interim. I want to talk about the impact of the triggers and give you a visual of what that is. What we're looking at is our unrestricted general fund revenue summary. The first column, the current operating, that's our current operating budget. That's the budget that we revised in July. The projected would be the budget should our budget revisions be accepted. And the difference column is the budget revisions. So, very clearly, we see the drop of three million dollars to our revenue limit for the unrestricted general fund. Then we see our local income has gone up by about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. What that is, is in two thousand ten, eleven, the budget for the parcel tax was seven point two million dollars. What we actually received was seven point five. So, I've adjusted the budget for this fiscal year to match what we received last year. And just to stay on that note, what this impact does for us when we look at our multi-year projections, and I know we've talked about it earlier tonight, but that means in that third year out, that thirteen, fourteen, because of the passage of Measure M, we get to add seven point five million dollars to our local revenue. So, that's been a huge plus for us. But, in the two thousand eleven, twelve budget, we're reducing our revenue by almost three million dollars, by two point seven million. Now, we move and look at our expenditure summary. If we just glance to the very bottom, total expenditures, we're increasing it by three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. The bulk of that is comprised of the four thousands. If you look at the supplies, and we go all the way to the difference column, it's three hundred and eighty-four thousand. What we do at first interim is we've closed our books for two thousand ten, eleven, and we know the carryforward amounts. What a carryforward is, is revenue that the school sites have received, gifting or donation in a prior year. We're unable to spend those dollars, and so now we have to increase the budget to allow the school sites to spend those dollars. So, that's what we're doing here in the four thousands. We're making some minor changes in our classified and certificated salaries and benefits, a reduction of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then, we're increasing our services and capital outlay by about a hundred and fifty dollars. But the net effect is an increase of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
With the four thousands? Explain it again. The increase is due to the sites have raised money, but they didn't spend it in the previous fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay.
And in prior, in prior budget years, we make the assumption that they're spending all of their money until the books close, is that correct?
Correct. Likewise, with the restricted fund, which we're not showing tonight, with the restricted fund, we always budget the maximum amount that can be spent, and then we bring in the carryforward at first interim.
Okay. So, we can assume that money is like being raised by PTAs and booster clubs?
Correct.
It's already been raised in the previous year, but they didn't spend it all, so they're spending it...
Yes, generally, it's raised for a specific purpose. So, say, for example, we had a school site raise a large amount of money for a technology upgrade, and they wanted to upgrade their computer lab. And so, they have the funds in place, we just haven't yet placed the order or paid the vendor. And so, that would be why we, and we did see a lot of that last year, but that would be an example of what a carryforward amount is.
Yeah. Help me remember, Erin. I mean, this was like a topic when we had that working group back in two thousand three and four about carryover from one year to the next. And there were some philosophical discussions about, well, if a fifth-grade family was quite involved in participating in something, but then their child was gone, and so on and so forth. So, wasn't there something that came out of that discussion as to when, you know, that the PTAs were actually going to expend money?
I think what you're remembering is the philosophical discussion that PTAs have in terms of the money that they, the theory in fundraising at PTAs is you're supposed to be raising the money in the year and spending it that year. And the exception to that is at the end of the year, they can earmark it for certain things. So, they are able to do carryover. However, that's not really what we're talking about in this site carryover money. This is site dollars, not, it could be PTA money that's been gifted to the sites, for example, to spend on instructional supplies, and maybe there's still some purchase orders in the pipeline, for example, that haven't been spent like that. But what you're thinking over is really more the dollars that were at the school PTA accounts, not the site discretionary accounts. Am I saying that right, Amber?
Yes.
So, is this unusual? Or are we doing something?
No.
No, this happens every year.
I was gonna say, almost every year. I think the supply budget...
And remember it being that kind of a number, but I don't have last year's in front of me, so, okay.
Well, and this includes the principals discretionary funds, that they've, you know, money that they've socked away for, you know...
Yeah, but we don't give them anything. Where do...
But if they get gifting money from...
Gifting money.
Right.
This is, for example, the sites that are collecting ADA reimbursement money that comes back as, you know...
It's all kinds of gifting monies.
Yeah.
But while it's written as an expenditure, really, the money is already there. It's not like it's a new expense to us that we weren't prepared for.
It's an increase in the budget, because in order for them to spend it, we have to give them the budget to do that. And this gives them that ability.
Okay. So, since we've had our unaudited actuals, and we have our financial statements, we can say our beginning fund balance is nine point four million dollars in two thousand eleven, twelve. And this is the general fund, the unrestricted general fund. With our revenues, transfers in, we're increasing it by seventy-eight million, but we're decreasing it with our expenditures by eighty-one point seven million. So, this year, with the trigger of three million dollars, we just reduced our revenues, we will be deficit spending by three point seven million dollars. And that means that we are projecting an ending fund balance of five point six million dollars for the two thousand eleven, twelve year. Again, this will help us, we will maintain our fiscal solvency with this amount, but we are deficit spending by three point seven million dollars.
What percentage would that leave us at in terms of the reserve?
It's five point seven two.
Thank you.
Pearl's asked if I just do this last slide, because this is kind of where I start getting into the act in terms of staffing, enrollments, projections, and of course, the potential for layoffs. So, as you see in January, late January, we'll come back to you with summarizing whatever the governor has laid out as his plan for the next fiscal year, and how he deals with the trigger that may in fact have been pulled by that time. As we've often said, the trigger will probably be pulled because it is a reaction to the fiscal condition of the state. But whether or not, and how it's dealt with, is a political question as well. And so, the governor will deal with that, as he always does, in his budget. Then, in early February, we further review of the budget plan and determining the needs for layoff. And of course, we'll start looking at projections for enrollment, rolling enrollment forward, looking at what has happened in the previous two years. I think I've explained to you before in terms of enrollment, that while we're down a few students this year, thirty or so, overall, we really lost nine hundred kids, but eight hundred and seventy new enrollees also came in. And trying to predict at what level they're coming and going is very tricky, obviously, and why sometimes our estimates for staffing are a little bit off. But we get it as close as we can. And then, in March, the second interim will come forward, and we'll be know at that point a little bit more about how we've done this year and all the different budget categories. At that same time, that would be the last chance we would have to adopt a layoff resolution for certificated layoffs, remember, because of the March fifteenth deadline for certificated layoffs. That, remember, only really initiates the process for, then there would be a hearing in April, and it's actually in May when you issue the final layoff notices. But, meeting the deadline of March fifteenth gets that process rolling. Now, with the classified having a forty-five-day notice of requirement for layoffs, we can wait till the end of April as the last chance to really adopt a layoff resolution for affecting classified employees. However, again, that's no reason we cannot do it earlier if we know, based upon our information from the second interim of how we're doing this year, and the governor's budget, and all those things that we have to put into the mix, we may in fact come to you earlier. While all of that is going on, of course, we're negotiating contracts with our employee organizations, and there's an impact, obviously, there as well. Once settlements are made, we have to come back and say what the cost of that would be and project it out for the next couple of years, if there's a cost or a savings, through concessions. And then, finally, the budget that you must adopt for twelve, thirteen, of course, is due by June thirtieth, but that would complete the, what's coming up in the second half of this year.
Questions? Okay. Anybody have any questions? Then, we need to actually certify, correct?
Yes.
So, we need a motion to certify that the district will be able to meet its financial obligations for the two thousand eleven, twelve fiscal year and the subsequent two fiscal years. Can I have such a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've now certified it. Now, we move on to item four, and that's a budget revision. Or I don't know if you want to take them all together or do them separately?
Can I suggest that if you could take them all as one? These are revising all the different budgets to get them updated and getting projected.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
This is what makes the first interim work, correct?
Yeah, all these things have to happen. Okay, so could I have a motion to approve item L four through L eight?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, we move on to discussion action.
If I can invite Trent up. He was just with us a week or so ago, but this is kind of the second step of this process.
What I want to do, just to recap real quick, just a couple minutes...
Are you on?
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. What I'd like to do is just recap for a couple minutes of the, kind of, the process so that people can understand what the whole project is about. Basically, back in May, the ASB Board direction was to establish priorities and solutions for the technology program in the district. What we were able to identify over the time, first off, was our infrastructure was in the greatest need of attention. So, what staff had done is we've identified that the equipment, the core network equipment switch gear, was originally installed back in two thousand. So, the recommendation to the board was that we upgrade that equipment. At the same time, there was some concern about moving the district in a direction like higher ed, like other experiences for, to take advantage of the growth in mobile technology and personal devices and things like that, to create a situation that would position our district to take advantage and leverage some of those new technologies. So, back in, we came back to you in September, and with additional direction to provide some guidelines as to the process of the research and evaluation and information that we collected. So, some priorities that the board had asked was, one, positioning for the future, look at best practices from other districts, higher ed, wise financial investments, so that these were intelligent, smart decisions that would create this, put us in that position for the next five to seven years. And again, create an environment for more seamless integration and use of developing technologies. So, the processes and steps were that we went back, we looked at best practices, we looked at other K12s, higher ed, we did product evaluations, we did site visits, we, the staff did a good job of looking at all those things and taking into several considerations. First off, total cost of ownership. What is the amount of support that's going to need it by internal staff, by vendor partners? Secondly, the compatibility with our existing infrastructure, as well as scalability? Is this going to allow us to be in a position for the next five to seven years for growth, for new developing technologies, and all those sorts of issues? At the December first meeting, the two priorities, just to recap, were, one, the core network infrastructure, and secondly, a wireless management and security solution. At the December first meeting, after meeting with our advisory committee doing this research, we brought to you recommendations for those two solutions. The first one was a Cisco solution from Bear Data, which is the core infrastructure and hardware. The second one was a wireless management and security solution from Bradford Networks through a vendor partner of AccuVant. At the December first meeting, the recommendation, direction of the board was to evaluate financing options, which we have done, and to present those to you. So, in the, what we've done since that meeting is, our legal, our legal counsel has reviewed all the contracts for, and the proposals through a company called Key Finance, or Cisco Capital, to finance the, both projects. And the terms for the financing are for the, for the core switch hardware, Cisco gear is a five-year term, okay? The wireless management and security solution is a three-year term, okay? The reason why the difference is, is that the lease finance company would only do the sixty-month term on the Cisco products, because it's part of their Cisco Capital, Key Finance. So, the rate on the three years is slightly just, slightly less. I think it's one point nine one, where the rate on the sixty-month is two point two five. So, in addition to the resolution about financing is the purchasing vehicle for this. And what it is, is there's two different ones. There's a CMAS, California Multiple Award Schedule, for the AccuVant product, for the Bradford Networks, and for the Cisco equipment. And with Bear Data, it is what's called a WISC agreement, the Western States Cooperative Alliance. So, what those two vehicles allow you to do is, the states have already kind of gone through and evaluated and approved, and now they allow districts and government agencies to purchase off of that. We've also been able to get even lower pricing than those agreements. And now, what we're coming back to tonight is, is with the resolutions that our legal team has created for us that cover the agreement for, to use those purchasing vehicles and to finance, and the financing piece of that.
As well as professional contract services.
Thank you. The professional contract services are separate. There's an agreement for those, because those are not covered under a CMAS or a WISC agreement. So, that is what the two items before you are this evening.
And also, before you, at the table there, is a revision of the exhibits for Resolution sixteen for the AccuVant one. There was a clerical error. We had posted the wrong exhibits there. So, in front of you are the correct ones.
And the reason we're financing is because, A, the interest rate is extremely low, and B, it helps us with our cash flow problem.
That's correct.
Because that's the other thing that's going on.
We hope within the next couple of years that the interest rate at the county treasury, where we currently have our cash, will go up, and... where we currently have our cash, will go up, and that this rate is set, that the differential that will actually, it'll make it even better in terms of financing for us.
Might make a little bit of money, yeah. Okay, are there any questions of Trent?
I just have one, Trent, and that actually goes back to probably December first when you're making the presentation. When you were out looking at sites and talking to them, were you able to obtain any electronic use agreements that are in place at public high schools? Kind of between, the agreements between students, parents, and the school district? Because I know that's something we're going to be heading towards.
Yeah, there's, I think this is such a developing strategy for schools to allow students to bring their own devices, because we start talking about security, accessing your network. The whole use of technology in the classroom completely changes with devices that have cameras, the devices that have not only internet or network access from the school district, but from their own devices, like cell phones. So these are things I think that we're going to have to visit as a district and as a board through board policy. There's already a high demand for that from students and staff, but I do think that we're going to have to look at some site-based policies for teachers and classroom management as well as district policies in terms of liability and legality. And I think we're moving, we see a lot more of this at higher ed, but the whole approach to how they do it is completely different, and the responsibilities, the rules, the SIPA requirements are a lot different for us as opposed to them. So part of the reason that the solution we have is, we want to be able to determine where our students are going. One, first of all, who they are, so we don't have wide-open solution. Who they are, where they're going, and what the devices they are that they're using, which will help us be able to manage that better. And also, in conjunction with the policies we have for those students, be able to either approve, disapprove, limit, evaluate what they're doing. So I think we'll definitely be coming back to you with those.
Well, and I just, you know, because I think it's the right way to go. I mean, I'm so glad we're moving forward on this, because, you know, it's definitely, we need to get a move on it and go that way, so.
How long do you, I mean, is this going to be reported to the board like a facilities project of, so we know where we are? And how much time do you think it's going to take for the Cisco part to?
You know, the first thing will be the acquisition, the purchase orders, and the planning with the engineers to get all the configuration, all those processes done. The other piece of it is, is we'll probably roll it out in a phased approach. For example, we probably do, for example, make sure staff and faculty have the ability to, you know, do that, and then look at our, probably at the secondary level, high school secondary, and filter some of that down. We currently do have Wi-Fi access, we do have solutions, but we want to improve them and make them a little more robust so that students can, you know, take advantage of some of the services we help to offer.
But when do you foresee any of the rollout?
I'm hoping.
This school year?
I'm thinking probably more at the end of this school year, hopefully, and have it in place by the fall.
Okay.
And then we'll be providing you either board, weekly board updates, or can come back to you at a facilities meeting or an additional board meeting with that.
Well, following on what Erin brought up, and I'm looking that we have policy workshops, well, we have two, March the fifth and May the seventh. And I know we've had Trent at policy workshops before, talking about various things. Would it be a good idea to put some of those applicable policies that have to do with acceptable use? Anything else that may trigger something that we need to?
Yeah, we, in fact, Bill and I have this discussion about the whole acceptable use. Well, there's two arenas there. There's employee use of technology, and there's also student use.
Right, I'm thinking about the whole milieu, not just students.
Yeah, it has to be, I think it'd be prudent to review those and kind of address how the developing technologies have changed that, some of that. And in keeping in mind, too, when you ask about a timeline, we will be going out through E-rate to upgrade the network speed and some of those capabilities. So it kind of goes hand in hand, and that will hopefully happen July one.
Gotcha, all right.
Just one quick little thing, too. As I noticed in one of the case studies that you had brought in on that December first, that they found that they needed to actually have personnel to check the devices, to see, you know, when they came on campus, to see if they were compatible, and if they had probably all the virus protection, all that. Do you foresee that being an issue?
Well, the solution that we're putting into place will, has a piece of it that does identification so that you can, or what they call profiling, so you can set it up to say if a user does not have, or devices that have this type of antivirus or this type of update, then they get this type of access. So the long-term goal is to limit the amount of devices we have to touch, we have to configure. We want to stay kind of out of that business, so.
But I'm assuming there'll be a whole slew of things we haven't thought through in terms of what happens when.
Right.
Much like, I know you said you use, you know, Pepperdine's kind of model for some of this. There's a tech group, a tech guy, a tech person that troubleshoots. We're really going to have to think through how it gets operationalized.
Personnel and support is definitely going to be something that we're going to have to address. For, you know, for example, for students coming out, what is the, what are the channels for getting the help desk, or getting assistance, or for staff to say, hey, I got this great thing for, you know, the holidays or my birthday, now I want to come and use it at school? What are the guidelines in terms of whether it's information posted on our website, staff development, or a contact at the school, what the channels are? So those definitely have to be addressed.
I think our acceptable use policy was revised maybe about a year or two ago, but I'm not sure we've, and we'll find out whether and when the next CSBA update to that particular policy. It might be that we'll have to go out to other districts, maybe who are a little bit ahead of the game in this whole regard for taking a look at acceptable use policies or not.
Do our employees and students?
Do our employees have to sign that every year?
Well, the last, last year, we had every district employee sign off on the newest of our technology acceptable use policy. If we update it, we would obviously have to go out once again, and it's a good thing to do, to have all policies reviewed. We also, any new employee coming on board, of course, signs up that they've read these policies, a whole litany of policies, one of which is technology and its uses.
Okay, any other questions of Trent? Well, we need to adopt both resolutions. So do you want to do them separately or together, or what would be your wish? You do them together?
Yeah.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve Resolution number one five two zero one one dash twelve, and also Resolution number sixteen dash two zero one one dash twelve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Trent, you're good to go.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you. Okay, now we move to appointment of board representatives. And I know this is just a scintillating part of the whole agenda here, but.
It's when you have to twist arms.
Yeah, so for the first one, CSBA slash legislation, you know, Dora and I kind of shared it, but basically, it's mostly just ledge rep. And I'm doing that right now, but I was thinking, Erin, you might want to do it, too.
Done that before in my life.
Okay, you want to do it together?
Sure.
Okay, why don't we do that?
I figure that Larry's not here, so he's going to get the worst pull, I get the second worst pull.
So what could we give Larry?
Well.
No, I'm happy to do that with you, Barbara.
Okay, I thought that'd be fun. Okay, next is the LA County Committee on School District Organization. It takes very little effort whatsoever. We could assign that to Larry, because it doesn't take any effort, unless someone else wants to do it.
I was actually going to say I might want to do that.
You do it, Tony.
But I'm trusting you that it's very low effort.
It is, I promise you, it is very low effort.
I'll reach in next year now, and I'm learning the ropes.
Yeah, right, okay. The next one is the Los Angeles County School Trustee area laxa. That's also very little effort.
Well, they always meet on the Fourth Thursday.
Right, and some way out in the middle of.
Well, yeah, Monterey Park.
Yeah, Monterey Park, so it's not convenient. So anyway, do we want to give that to Larry?
Yeah.
Because it's very little effort?
Yeah.
And then, because I've done all these before, so I can speak from experience. The next one is SOCal ROC.
But you've done such a stellar job.
I know, I know. I'll do it again.
Are you able to do that as board president as well, though, Barbara?
Yeah, yeah, I can do it. So I'll do that one, and that just leaves the Technology Advisory Committee.
I'm fine.
And I've been on it for years, too, so.
Well, do both of you want to be on it?
We can both do it.
Would you like to do that?
Sounds like we're heading into some busy times, so I'd be happy to.
Yeah, okay, well, that's great. The only thing that's missing on here, which is, we had talked about city representatives.
Oh, that's good.
But I think we can talk about it and then put it on the next board meeting for approval, but my recommendation would be that wherever, we have people from all the cities on the Hill. I think wherever you live, you should represent your city. So Malcolm, you would be Rolling Hills, if that's okay. Tony, you would be Palos Grutis Estates. Larry, we're going to assign him to Rolling Hills Estates, because that's where he lives. And then Erin, you and I could share RPV.
We should.
It's the biggest city.
It's the biggest city, it needs to.
But that would be my recommendation. We can't take an action on it, because it's not on the agenda, but if you could put it on the next agenda, that would be very helpful. So all of you can go forward right now and be the liaison to your city.
As the liaison to Rolling Hills, I want to remind you of Monday's holiday gathering.
Yes.
They feed you well.
Oh, they do a wonderful job, absolutely. Okay, is there anything else that anyone wants to discuss under that item? Okay, let's move on next to the facilities construction program, and we don't have a rush here.
No, and actually, this facility update was what was presented last Thursday.
Okay.
At the December first meeting, it's a repeat of that report.
Okay. So we have, well, does anyone have any questions on the item number one? That's just information. And then we have two items, amendment number one with Golden State labor compliance, and then the second one is to award a contract to Cal Police Services for repair of the playground surfaces at various schools. Does anyone feel the need to discuss these, or can we just go ahead?
Yeah, I just have a question. We have to do number one, amendment one, because the project is extended.
Correct.
So does this cost get covered by anybody because of the situation we're in?
Well, I think that part of the reimbursement we got from the.
That sixty-something thousand?
They're supposed to incorporate all of that, but I don't think we're going to get directly reimbursed for that, but I can double-check that for sure.
And I just have a quick question on number three. Having been around way back when, when we originally put those playground materials in there, was there any kind of guarantee, warranty on any of them?
I don't know that.
And maybe a better question, is this new material going in, does that have warranties that's going to, because, gosh, it just seems like we had, I mean, I know it's been probably ten years.
I think we lived its useful life, but I will double-check about.
I think we've done Mont Malaga twice, because the PTA, going back into the ancient times, the PTA paid for the special equipment, playground equipment, and the matting that went with it, and they were one of the first schools to do it, before we were doing it for all the other schools. Then when we started our modernization program, we brought all the other schools up to whatever level was acceptable.
And I think that was through Measure K funds, I think they did that.
And I think we had to redo Mont Malaga, because it didn't quite meet state specifications at that point. I seem to recall something like that.
Yep.
So, yeah, if it was Measure K, it could be, have been ten years.
There is an explanation of the type of warranty program. It's on Exhibit A on page eight, but maybe, I don't know, maybe you're looking for more than that.
It's almost like, but we probably need to be thinking about that in terms of deferred maintenance and knowing that that's, you know, something that has to be repaired.
And also, I wanted to mention that we did apply from A.Skip for saying that we were going to replace this, and we did receive a grant for them to help offset the cost as well. So the fact that we're doing, being proactive and trying to prevent injuries, it was recognized by A.Skip as well, so.
Okay, so could I have a motion to approve items two and three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, now we move on to consent calendar, and I'm going to ask you if there are any items you want to pull from consent. Malcolm?
None.
Tony? Erin? And I have nothing. So if I can have a motion to approve items one through ten, that would be great.
Uh, one through thirteen.
Excuse me, one through thirteen. I had my hand over eleven through thirteen, you know, and only went to ten, okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Let me just get down there. Okay, now we move to information, and that's recognition of Peninsula Education Foundation Chuck Miller Grant recipients, and that's an information item. Did anyone want to talk to it?
I will. You know, the event was held already, and many of you were there to honor the recipients of the Chuck Miller Grant, including Chuck Miller was there as well. And it's a great event. The fact that the foundation is able to provide funding for teachers to do something special in enrichment activity or enrichment materials they need in order to present activities for students is a worthwhile project. And there were actually, I think, fifty-four. I don't have my information item open at the moment, but it has there all the recipients and the little project that they were awarded their grant for, and there was a nice group picture of all the recipients at that event. And we always want to recognize the great work of the Peninsula Education Foundation, and in this particular case, thank Chuck Miller for his continued participation in this worthwhile project.
Okay, so any other comments from anybody? No? Okay, let's move on next to sale and disposal of property. And I think we had a few items there. Does anyone care to discuss that?
No, thank you.
Okay, next is the Citizens' Joint Oversight Committee for Measures P and V in the minutes. That's just an information item. Does anyone have any comments?
Mm-mm.
Okay, then we move to reports of board members. So I'm going to pick on Malcolm first.
Well, I want to thank the PTA Council for kicking off the holiday season in last Friday's get-together. And other than that, it's been, since Measure M.
Kind of quiet.
It's been quiet. I've reacquainted myself with the ever-lovely Mrs. Sharp, and there we go.
Okay.
And we will have a debriefing. Our consultant from Tramitola will be coming down to talk to the committee next week to do a debrief and.
After his victory tour at CSBA.
The victory, we're doing a victory lap around the hill, yeah. So anyway, I will report back to the board anything that Teresa brings that I feel is worth reporting. Not that we want to do this again, right?
Never, never again.
So that's it.
Tony?
I just, you know, there's, obviously, I'm sure there's lots of things going on at the secondary schools, but I'm much more familiar right now with some of the elementary schools, and it's the holiday season, so there's all sorts of performances going on. So I just wanted to thank all those folks that are allowing those performances to happen, and those that allow us to fund some of those performances, from the foundations to the faculty. And I know a lot of folks, you know, it's tough times out there right now, and I just think it's important in this holiday season that we're very grateful for what we have, and very thankful for what we have as we go into it. And while I like to believe everybody is blessed, I feel especially blessed this season, so.
Erin?
Well, I guess as my first board report as a new member, just wanted to say thank you, all of you, for your warm welcome and guidance. I really appreciate it. And really, in the last forty-eight hours since I've taken the oath, the only, I guess, official school business I've done is I did, I was at Peninsula High School at lunchtime for the Willenberg students when they come and perform. And what happens is they take, in this case, the ASB paid for two buses of their students to come to our campus. They shadow our students for a little bit in the morning, and then we give them lunch, and then they come to the gymnasium at our lunchtime, the students' lunchtime, and do a show. And these are, these are the specialists of special needs children that are performing. And if you just don't, you can only imagine how heartwarming this is. And I need to tell you. And I need to tell you that that gymnasium was filled with, I'm sure, more than 2,000 students watching, clapping, singing, and it's really, it's just a very, very special time to show what great kids we have in this community, so, that's my little report.
Well, thank you. And I don't have a report other than to say happy holidays to everyone, and I hope you go and enjoy yourself and rest and, you know, come back in January all geared up and ready to go again and have recharged batteries. So I am going to adjourn this meeting at 8:10, and we are adjourned.